This conference will now be recorded.
That's all unless you have to add. Oh, I did get, we did get that letter submitted to address to extend the time period on that Jackson Street project. Did find a state contact filing for that and the letter you signed to submit to that was submitted. So I haven't put back.
Did you address that email today? Was it off the 5%?
Yes, I did address that email. Her back.
Okay, okay. Other than that, I'd like to mention also Main Street. Crystal and I did a research to verify our finances on that end. We do have 800,000 set aside of that capital out there and we also have this capital out there project. We have 400,000 looking forward to get this year, which most likely will receive that for the 1.2 million right now. We'll be looking at in the future trying to get 500,000, but we have six years to find 500,000, which most likely we're going to after capital out there funding to fund that. So that was an additional spending we had with the last, last meeting. So that's where we stand on that, on that Main Street project.
Were you able to find that there was any sort of COVID funding?
No, not yet, sir. But we, they are researching. So they were, but I, there is, there is money. So I think once we get staff settled in a little bit better, I think we will find that.
It is the side. All of ours can be okay. But the question will be where that money will be given out. That's what's going to take a little bit of research.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thank you.
Good.
We have been at this time.
Good. Moving on to, yes, sir. Yes, I just like to, I just like to say a word. Yes. Couple of weeks ago, our city commissioner Paul Capel passed away. This past week, a young woman, Bernard's sister, bright Chinese star, Mike Jackson, police chief, Donovan Tatum, passed away. Both of them, great servants of the community. Proud to know they were well-respected people, stood for open rights. More so, they were good friends and they were family. And if it would be okay, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the people, okay?
Are you here? Silence, please. Thank you, Chris.
Moving on to public comment.
Good evening, Commissioner and Mayor Trivia. I just wanted to invite everyone out to our candidate public forum. We are celebrating with Levington Chamber. It'll take place this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the town hall. Just want to make sure I have the time right in three. And we will be having two. This will be the first one. If you guys could please join us, we would love to have y'all. It will be street on Facebook live as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone who came to the meeting. I wanted to update you on the status of the reimbursements for the North Main utilities. I have been in contact with Constructors Inc. on the billing. We have been billed Norwood and West will be coming through and we, I did direct Jalen, Jalen, sorry, Jalen and staff that we did need to go ahead and close out that project. We should be, reimbursement should be around 138,000. That getting Valencia, you can tell should be reimbursing the city. We did come in about $7,500 under budget. But I just wanted to give you guys an update on whether it's been under the question. I just wanted to give you an update on that, that we are working on the reimbursement as we speak and we should go on 138,000.
We appreciate that.
I think also to, on that other point, when we talked about the concrete around the lift station, it was part of the prospect. It hasn't been done, but that is, we've both researched that. That is part, so it's not going to be out of pocket to the city. Last time you mentioned it was to be out of pocket to ensure that the, the two lift stations were square and now, but we found out that it's part of the cost that they're supposed to take care of. So it's not going to be out of pocket.
What was the problem, sir?
Uh, just to put a lip around it. So no debris and trash. Right now it's just, it's, it's just the lift station. So we put about a three foot barrier or its company slab around it. No work runoff in there. No, you know, just protects, like this protection.
So is that, could have been part of the issue before with it?
That was the issue. The fact that you didn't have the lift, when we went to test the, the lift station, it was.
Not saying.
It was full sand, had to be flushed out into a point where it ended up, we backed up several manholes. But that was the issue. And then when we had discussed about doing the lip after the fact, we did, I did reback on the contract and it's actually included in there. So.
So it should alleviate that problem?
Correct.
It's good.
And they are, they have been made aware.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? There's no more public comment. Moving to non-action, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, the only non-action item on the agenda this evening is discussion on the stop sign request by Levington Transportation. Crystal will speak on it.
Mayor, Commissioner, this went before the planning and zoning board. All we have is a couple of different requests for some stop signs to be added to the city streets by the Levington Bus Transportation personnel. The picture shown on the board is 11th and F. F is where the school buses actually have to come in to drop off the kids in that large parking area. They're, they're not allowed to come down from Avenue D along 11th Street. They can come up 11th Street from K or any of the side streets leading to 11th Street, but they're not allowed to, because there are so many parents dropping off kids right there in front of the school. Well, when they get to F, trying to get across there, because there are so many parents dropping off kids, the buses can't get across that intersection because they have a stop sign, but 11th Street does not. So therefore the traffic just continues to flow and this is causing them to be late. There's supposed to be a crosswalk guard there, but the bus transportation says many times there is not a crosswalk, crosswalk person available there, or they're only stopping the traffic for the children and not the buses. So the planning and zoning didn't have a problem with this stop sign due to 11th Street not being a arterial street. The next one they have, if you'll switch sides.
Can we go back? Can we stop where we go there?
Okay, yep.
I got opinion on that one right there.
Okay.
Um, I don't know what Bernard feels about that. That seven days a week, I'm going to stop there. At 5:30 in the morning, there ain't nobody there. In 10 years, I've never seen a crossing guard there. I hate that idea. So I, I don't have a problem with a temporary one during school zones, but a permanent one there? Oh, I have a.
Well, that is another thing we discussed on this and the other was some temporary signs, but I have not been able to help the schools, to get the schools to actually bring out temporary signs in the morning and take them back in and temporary signs in the evening. So those signs are only there during those bus transportation hours. They're not there all day or on holidays or during the summer when they're not needed. We did have, but like I said, I have been unable to get a hold of the Ms. Candy at the schools.
Yeah, because I can see that about 30 in the morning, I'm going to run that stop sign. And we're going to have a new officer and I'm going to be mad. This is just going to be bad all the way through. Um, that's mine. With the CDL, it just, just creeps it right up there. So, yeah.
So then the other area they wanted to discuss was Jackson, which this is an arterial street and this is an emergency vehicle route for ambulances, fire, police to get to the opposite side of town. So on Jackson and Fifth, where they come out from the back of the schools, they also have a trouble getting out onto Jackson because the Jackson Avenue traffic doesn't slow down for stop. This is the one that the planning and zoning board was not, they did not like the idea of a stop sign there all the time at all. Just because it does slow down your emergency vehicles. If you've got somebody across town having a heart attack, you don't need to have to stop at a stop sign that's going to slow the process of them getting.
Well, don't we already have some other turning issues and stop signs on that street already for?
Not between second and ninth. There is no stop sign, yield sign or anything on, on Jackson.
Jefferson is where they put the.
Jefferson is where they put in halt. And that's the, the buses aren't allowed to go to the front of the school. They have to go to the back just.
So is this one of the roots that, oh.
This is also one of the groups that police chief have put in.
Yeah, that created a lot of controversy.
Okay. That is one of the ones.
Temporary, temporary signs are a great idea because they'll only be up there school hours, year, year.
And who's going to be responsible to set them up and take them down?
It's my understanding the school personnel will do that. I can promise them.
Yeah. If you get a hold of her, because I have had no luck getting a hold of her. But that's where the street department was like, well, we don't have the staffing to have somebody out there unless they want to hire a part-time person to do that every day through the school.
As I was saying, you really don't want to put any more burden. But then again, you want to make sure that we don't have a safety issue where somebody ends up getting hurt or accident or whatever. So we need to address it. Like the idea, like you said, with the ones that are temporary, we could put them up and take them down, but we need to find out who'd be responsible for doing that.
Sir, you know what? What worries me about that is that since it's temporary, people get used to just driving through there and forget that there is a stop sign. And even if you have a sign up, you know, they already got that conversation that this, this roadway doesn't have a stop sign and run through it and kill somebody. So.
That is another problem they brought up.
Either double sign to where it has to almost be a light sign or something to call somebody's attention. That's what worries me about.
We did discuss also too about doing the solar lights that flash, the stopping, flashing solar lights that you stop only when flashing.
Yeah.
Um, and that way those lights, which that would be a cost on the city and those lights, the street department said those run about $2,000 apiece. So that would be a pretty big cost to have those in both areas just, you know, flash, stop only when flashing, and they would have timers that to set off that it would only go off of the morning hours and the afternoon.
Just like the crosswalk. That's a better idea. Really have some sort of flashing light and then just a stop sign.
So, cause that's Jackson. Jefferson, we got all those little cones and all that. Remind me why that was there?
That is for the parents to pick up and drop off students. The back way is for the buses and the kids at New Hope.
So, New Hope, why is the traffic an issue there?
Uh, because the Jackson Street doesn't stop and the buses can't get out.
Are we picking up that much traffic there that they're having an issue?
Yeah, we got three schools.
Well, still, I mean, you've got everybody going and loading up here.
Mm-hmm. You got a bus, you got probably about 20 buses that. And they have to be, let me think, they're kind of on a time schedule.
Understand, but you still have to, you're still going to deal with traffic either way. So, you know, it's no different than the four-way stop on 17th. Ninety percent of the time, because nobody can decide who's going first. I'm not a fan of that one either.
So there was a traffic study done. They had the speed trailer put on track studies. Sorry. The speed trailer was put at Jackson and Eighth, which is just on down the road from this area. And we have your average speeds were around 30 miles an hour in between 20 and 30. Of course, you did have a few speeders that were up there, you know, in the high 50s.
Those on Sundays, we try to beat the meteors.
The, so yeah, when it comes to the incoming vehicles, you had a breakdown of 37, 31% of the vehicles were driving 40 to 45 miles per hour. That speed limit on that road is only 35. So the people actually following the speed limit were 11,756 of them. So 99% of them were driving speed limit. You have a small percentage that way.
So that was thinking, there's 11,000 people on Jackson over what period of time?
Uh, this is ran over a, from September 24th of 21 to October 12th of 21. So that would be a two-week period.
Two weeks?
And so we had it facing, it was facing, like you could see the counters when you're coming at it, if you were headed towards the west. So that would be your incoming vehicles. There was a little over 9,000, 11,000 of them. The other direction, there was 9,000 vehicles and most of them were following the speed regulation too.
So that's 65 car per hour. And probably during the school zone, you can probably.
See, but that back there is not busy. Maybe it is a school zone. So they don't slow down. There are pedestrian signs, there's school crossing signs, but there's no actual school zone slowdown five seconds. The planning and zoning, just kind of wanted some more information from you guys on how you felt about the matter.
So, okay, so how does the school route go? So, I mean.
So they come in off of Jackson.
Turn on Fifth Street or Sixth Street.
Turn on Fifth or Seventh there and go into that back parking lot by the game cafeteria and they drop off kids for all three schools. And then when they leave, they go straight up Fifth and get back on Jackson going whichever direction. They said usually they're headed back to the east because they're having to go on over to the.
League.
Yeah.
League, up in that top area over there by.
And they're all on time.
And that's what she said. They have like four minutes to get from one stop to the next. And when they sit and waited a stop sign for five or 10 minutes, they're late.
Yeah, and everybody behind them because they're going to be five, 10 minutes or. I like the light, light sign issue on time.
With a flashing stop sign.
And it's slowing down happening for the children that are crossing to go home too, because it's a lot of children cross over the. I think we had a incident there too, right?
Uh, most of the kids cross over.
That was by Noah's heart, but she was going to.
We had one incident.
There is crosswalks at Eighth Street because the kids will walk up to the front of the school and then come down Eighth Street and go across Jackson. There is crosswalks and there is a pedestrian sign at Eighth and. Is there another pedestrian sign down on Third? Well, there is one at Fifth, the crosswalk at Fifth. There's one at Eighth, Fifth and Third crosswalks. That are paying, just on the road. There's no sign that says slow down for them. It's just.
Can you reach out to the schools and see if they will help cover the costs on them?
Okay.
Just something, since it's a school day issue also.
So they go Jackson, back to Jackson, then the night street, right? Because they're taking all the heavily arterial, whatever they're called, roads.
And I think that's their first stop. I think that is their first stop, right? Well, sir, that's their first.
Different routes, because if they're in the southern part, they start with the other schools first and they work their way up. Yeah. So it just depends on where in town they're.
Yeah, that's our central, central school and sixth grade academy and the other starts at middle school. Turning further discussion.
Be nice to see how the, actually go.
I'm bringing up to another discussion next meeting.
Yeah, just, I mean, it's kind of hard to envision right now. I mean, you, you're making a guesstimate on how you're going to affect the whole citywide traffic based off of one person's needs. And I realize the school has, you know, there's a ton of issues with parents picking their kids in cars and being in the wrong spot, wrong time, trying to get their kids. Everybody's running all over town for 30 minutes, like chicken heads, but also it just be nice to kind of see how the routes lay out and like that there's a better way, but just so it works in my head.
I can do that.
Yeah, most likely it's like installed in there, installed, probably most likely four offices.
And I should be getting reports on, I had the speed trailer moved to the 11th Street and over there in front of that school, so I can get some readings off of that. And I may have a read foot on Jackson again, their closer to Fifth, so I can get some better readings.
Appreciate it, Crystal. Moving on to nine, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022 to 002, approval of healthcare insurance rebate of 10% back to the employees.
Most of it was made by Mr. Gannon, seconded by Mr. Bernard. Just kidding.
Yes, um, I did some quick figuring. Patrick was also doing some research at the same time, and he was able to find this technical release, give you a copy of it. And I've gone through and highlighted just some high points in this. I don't know if Patrick gave you some way to discuss that? No?
Okay.
I can. He had kind of looked through this and determined that. Determined that there was some guidance for the, these kind of rebates. Apparently it's been an issue since the first Walmart character band names where what's happened is these insurance companies are collecting for more like things like that. If the beneficiaries on these policies aren't using those, all those monies for that lab work, the insurance company then has to reimburse the policyholder. And so what's difficult and what they needed to do this guidance for was to determine how to divvy that rebate up. So it does give some guidance for allowing the policyholder to just retain that rebate. It also gives guidance for how to, to retain it or to actually, one of the things I highlighted was a comment about giving credit towards, you know, additional months of, of insurance. These are all things that we kind of talked about in the last meeting. There is some verbiage in there that was a little concerning to Patrick and it, it has to do with us being fiduciarily responsible for how we are divvying, divvying this money up. There's a lot of guidance in there about trust accounts being set up and, and it gets kind of into the weeds a little bit, but they're kind of basically saying that if you choose to do it this way, then there's a lot of kind of backend math that needs to be done. We, we're just discussing round numbers at the last meeting. And so that's what's on that page. That's a listing of all the employees that contributed during the time in question. So there's 121 of them that contributed during that time of which there's only 69 that are still here contributing. So if you were to divide it equally among the 121, it comes out to what? 170 something per person? If you were to decide to just contribute it or distribute it to the 69 that are still participating in the healthcare policy, it's $300. So that's a big difference what you determine to do with it. But, you know, you, you may want to talk to Patrick a little bit more about it because of the concern about us being fiduciarily responsible for how that money gets divvied up. Because there would be people that did contribute, contribute more, which you can see by that list, that some people, depending on what policy they had, if they had family included, if they had vision or not, that, so everybody paid different amount in. Now, the other question is who used the benefit and who didn't? And so that's where this is coming in. At the very last page, there's a little comment about the IRS implications. It's just saying, and this was something that I had brought up, if we were to actually cut checks to the employees that would be considered income, it's considered taxable on pre-tax health insurance, because we didn't tax it the first time. So now it would be income, it would be taxable, and it would be at a higher rate because we would have to call it a bonus. The other issue on the finance side would be that that, those checks would then be coming out of like our general fund where we would otherwise pull payroll or bonuses, but this is actually not cash that's sitting in any form. It's a rebate that's sitting as a credit on our bills. So we would actually be taking money out of an account wherever we determine that to be from to pay out these bonuses, these benefits. And then we would, we would eventually, you know, reimburse ourselves for those numbers because we would be saving over the next X number of months on the payments to the insurance. But just a heads up, I don't know if this has happened before. I don't know if you've had this issue come up before. I kind of wondered if it's just a, a larger number this year because maybe people weren't using their wellness and, and all this kind of lab work last year because for the most part, people stayed away from the doctors last year. So I wondered if that was why it was such a big number this year that came back, the 200 and something thousand, 216,000. So I don't know what that compares to in previous years. But going forward, it seems like we're going to need to put something in place if we continue to get these rebates back of how we're going to handle it. There's a comment in there. One of the other things I highlighted was the de minimis. We could basically just say, hey, it's just going to be a lot of work to try to determine what these figures should be. So we're going to just call it this de minimis amount and it gives us the authority to just retain that rebate. And so it's just saving it for us for future. So you've got a couple of different options to weigh here, whether you want to pay everybody who paid in an equal amount, if you want to pay just the people that are still paying in an equal amount, if you want me to actually try to apply a percentage for what each individual paid of that 20 something thousand that we're going to rebate, or if you want to just give everyone a holiday for the next X period of time on their health insurance, you know, cut checks, don't cut checks. So there's, there's a lot of different things, moving parts, but I think it should be some sort of a policy going forward because I think we may see this again, this coming here. There might be another big rebate. And there's just really not a good way around it. And, you know. And there's just really not a good way around it. And, you know, they have a five-page guidance trying to answer those questions for everybody who seems to be getting these rebate checks or rebate credits.
Well, I would feel comfortable with table and then getting some sound to present to the board and just setting to the going to the point of having an ordinance made up that way we have something to go by. Just like you mentioned, if next year we get another ten percent, they get another ten percent. We'll know what easily know where we stand on it and what direction we hit, instead of making one quick decision now and then next, next round we get the whole different decision. We'll just create something in place that every year we know if we ever rebate, this is the way we're going to, this is the direction we're going to head with it. It'd be a lot easier for the board of commissions to make a decision on that.
Yeah, and what makes it really complicated would be if we really started trying to split this money up, we would have the responsibility of making sure that that money was divvied up precisely. And what worries me is we're having to really get information about what the beneficiaries were using and not utilizing on their health insurance. So, I mean, it's a, it's a different question, which is why I stopped at making the calculation about this person put in this percentage compared to the rest. Because, yes, they might have put that in, but they also might have used their benefit while this other person put in less money, but they didn't use their benefit. So, you know.
Another thing for accounting practices, if you come up with a top three that you feel comfortable with, you present that to the board on next meeting, it'd be a lot more simple.
Well, it, it.
Because I know it's.
Yeah, for recommendation, yeah, for recommendation purposes, and something me and Patrick talked about was that, I mean, we don't know who the oversight would even be for us not being fiduciarily responsible for this, for not setting up a trust account and not divvying it up properly. We don't know where that would come from, should we decide to go ahead and just try to, to make it even you know, number. But really, the easiest way on a finance position would be to do the, the holiday, to do an insurance holiday. Reason I say that is because of the taxable part of, portion of the conversation and the fact that we're, we would basically be running the twenty thousand dollars, and it would take us X period of time to, to get that back if we're actually cutting a check to the employees. So because like I said, it didn't come to us in the form of a check, so.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is Patrick. I, I need to give credit to Chief Lozardo for finding that guidance document. That's not something I uncovered. He had it, he sent it to me, and so that's kind of where this got started. So he needs, he needs credit for finding that. And I, and I would not disagree with Ms. Kennedy's analysis. I think it's a good idea to table this until we can sit down and take a look at exactly what those options are and the ramifications from the standpoint of dollars too, or vacation time, or IRS issues, and also to get a good look at the current policy that was in place, because I think it talks about rebates also. So I think tabling it is the smart thing to do at this time.
Attorney, question?
Yes, no. Yes, I have a comment. I'm not faking it, getting it back to employees, because first off, we don't have enough staff to go through that deal. We're having enough to try to clean up our financial list, and that's going to be an absolute disaster. It's not going to be a popular thing, but I, I really feel that due to the reduction in staff and all this, they forgot to rebate, because they had plotted for X amount of employees. We lost a bunch, so we got a rebate. And I really feel you stuff that thing in the, in the bank and roll on and hope for better days. So that's my opinion, because this other thing is just going to be.
That is one of the options, right?
Yes, well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be money to us, just so that everybody was aware of that. It would just be savings on the front end for, for concurrent premiums to be paid. Yes, yeah, it's not money in our pocket. It should, it would just be savings over the next period of time. Or if we did decide to pay it out, it would be outflow of money, and there's no inflow. There's no offsetting credit.
I really think that just, you know, let it apply stuff to the next deal and move on. And because you try to break this up for employees and everything else, there's really not a huge benefit by the time you get to pay your taxes, fit the checks, all the stuff like that. It's a huge, huge task to overtake. I'm not a man.
Yeah, we are going to move forward on this. We definitely need more information. My concern is tax consequences. We're trying to do something positive. And not going the way that we wanted to. We want to get back to the employees, I understand that. But by doing the right thing, it could bite us in the butt.
Yes, I mean, because we could have to match in the tax, you know, calling it tax, we could have to match it and pay their portion of the tax, so.
So that's my concern.
So if you want to just spread the three options out, we'd make it simplified. Get on our next meeting, we put another action item, we can make a decision on which direction is it. And then we need to get a resolution made of, I mean, not only a resolution, but some sort of code or something we need to follow on our next, if this is reoccurring.
Yes, to put in our.
Something, something regards that, where it's simplifying, we'll just follow the same guidelines unless the board decides to go in a different direction on next, next one. Thank you, Mr. But you want to.
Me, really, but I have to. I can make a minute to my motion, resolution twenty twenty-two zero zero two, like approval of health insurance rebate, ten percent back to the employees. Like to table that until do you need till February fourteenth?
Yep.
Up to February fourteenth.
About a second then. Motion was made by Mr. Gannon, taken resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two, seconded by Mr. Bernard. Attorney, further discussion? Further discussion, protocol, Chen.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero zero nine, approval of new street light by thirteen oh nine West Carter.
Motion was made by Mr. Gannon, seconded by Mr. Bo. Crystal.
So we had a request for a street light. The street light is thirteen oh nine West Carter, which thirteen oh nine is in the direct, is directly in the corner of Carter, where it turns from running west to straight north. So those dots up there are the current streetlights.
What's the footing between the street, streetlight?
They average between two, two seventy, two sixty. They were right in that area. The ones along Q actually were closer together. They were quite a bit closer together. They were within a hundred fifty feet from each other.
Refresh my memory, on the average, though, over three hundred feet?
On the average, we would have two lights within three hundred feet. Because it's usually every two fifty to two seventy-five.
Thought the last time we did the overall city view was like every three hundred feet.
Just about, yes.
There's one here, three hundred feet later, we have another one.
Yes. The problem with this is that corner is a ninety-degree corner, and it is very dark at night. As you can see by the photos taken by the person requesting it, once you get in that corner, you can see his shadow from the streetlight that is up on the intersection of Q and Carter. But you can see how dark his actual corner is. So it was a safety concern for the citizens in the area. He did get, he did get a lot of signatures on his signature page. I think there was over, when I counted the actual addresses or the actual homes that it incurred, there was like ten different homes. So it would have been everybody on that corner area that agreed that this streetlight needed to be in place. Planning and zoning did approve it. They thought the corner was a bit too dark.
Your district commissioner, Bo.
I wanted us to get a light.
I didn't. No, I didn't.
That's the accomplices.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's the accomplice.
Snap district five.
Mr. Bo.
I've been asked to get a light assessment before, but Lee County Electric has informed me that they do not have any way to do a light assessment like that, to go in with like any meter to say, yeah, this is so much, this is the light doesn't get to this percentage until you hit this area. They don't have any type of meter.
So go back to the other.
There is one at the corner of nine and Carter. I just forgot to thought it, sorry. And they're all down there, so I just didn't deal with nine street. Or Laker, I didn't put the lights there back there either.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a fan, because we did this in my neighborhood, on the street, guys played the street, all this other stuff, so I'm not a fan. The three hundred foot, that's kind of our standard, you know, and get it, but during the development of that, the contractor maybe should have looked at it a little differently or whatever, but.
That was my point.
You know, I mean, that's, that's kind of where. That's another hundred dollar a month. We've got a street light over on the backside of my house. It's a hundred dollars a year. And during the last little budget cost.
The owner is on, he is online if you have any question.
Mr. Bo. Do you want to make an opinion on that? You can just come up to the phone if you'd like.
Can you show me for thirteen oh nine?
It's in the corner right there. If you can get a little closer, you can see the numbers.
Because when you're far away, you can tell right there and right over there needs something.
The existing pole is in between thirteen oh five and thirteen oh nine, right on the property lines by the edge of the roadway there. So the light would actually be right in the middle between thirteen oh nine and thirteen oh five.
I think it needs, if there's this dark spots in here, you know, because we're all the time. And it looks like it needs one on the other on this side too.
Yeah.
On ten.
We disagree with you. We can put the lights up and next thing you know, we're like, don't worry, what you do. I don't know.
I know, I know. And then all the two school things, what if you just put a school zone and just slow your thing down?
That's nothing.
I don't know.
I think it needs more. Just because you're coming and people walk all the time over there, and there's a lot of people out. When it was like lockdown COVID, I don't know how many people we almost had, we're all black all the time. We were like, everyone had lost their mind and went to the streets in black clothes.
You know, so.
My feeling is to err on the side of caution. If there's an issue, a safety issue especially, something needs to be done. It's anything we can do. You know, save all a hundred dollars. I understand it's stuff that we really don't want to afford, but it saves a child, and it saves a person, and it keeps people from getting in an accident. Not saving it will. But I think the error of the side of caution, that's maybe.
I understand, but then you have to look at every area in town, and then that cost just keeps skyrocketing. So we have a system where every three hundred feet, we put one up. There's always going to be a dark spot in town. I mean, there's always going to be a situation. Now, it's great that he took a picture in the dark where nobody's streetlights are on and stuff, but he didn't really take one with the vehicle as a person is driving. You know, so we can just read this screen.
Can you bring that screen, that previous screen? So you're, so it's between the two that they don't have? I'm just trying to figure what. Is it to the left hand, left hand corner?
It's right in the corner. It's actually in.
Left hand corner, right?
Yes.
So the distance between the two are actually the distance between their.
They're actually a little close together.
So it's actually right here. This is where the streetlights being requested to be but. Right in the corner of that curve. That is reason planning and zoning approved it. They thought there were plenty of other lights, except for the fact that when the subdivision was built, they should have put one in that corner. That corner shouldn't have been left out.
Well, whose properties are going to be the one with the property owner being willing to put us front on, because most likely they've made somebody front on.
Do they happen to have a light pole there, you know?
There is a light pole there. I have the pole number and everything in the resume.
There's already a streetlight circuit there.
Yes, it is the circuit, the other streetlight.
Okay, so there is a existing pole, but without light.
Yes.
So all they have to do is just put a light to all this. Attorney, further discussion? Hope for discussion, roll call, Chen.
Mr. Gannon?
No.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor, to be able.
Yes.
Resolution passed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero, variance for thirteen hundred North Main.
Motion was made by Gannon, seconded by Mr. Bo. Crystal.
Mayor and Commissioners, we requested variance at thirteen hundred North Main. Look up on the screen, this is a home, this is on North Main. When we changed this to an economic zone, of course, the home was allowed to remain. The property owners have since been in the process of selling the property, but the mortgage company will not mortgage it, because the insurance company will not insure it, because it can't be rebuilt if it is destroyed or demolished. So if tornado comes through and tears that house down, the people who are buying it cannot rebuild it as a home, because it's in the economic zone. Our code, the way our code reads, if they're just doing renovations in the home, okay, they're doing renovations. If they change the use to commercial, it can no longer be a residence. But what it doesn't cover is what happens to a home that is a home in the economic zone that gets destroyed or damaged by any means. Well, then you have to go back to the building code, and it says if any building is substantially damaged, it has to meet the current code. And the current code says you can't build a home there. So you see where this kind of backs itself back and forth, and it makes it to where insurances and mortgage companies don't want to, don't want to offer money for this home, because it can't be rebuilt as a home.
So there was nothing put in the ordinance?
There was nothing put in the ordinance to prevent this from happening. I have.
I understand that once it was built, I would residential in the commercial, it could never go back.
Yeah, and I did put that in the, the variance. We did specify in this resolution that it would only be able to be rebuilt exactly where it's at. He does own a couple of other lots to the south of the home, but he would not be able to make another home on those or expand the home larger than what it currently is. We also put in the resolution that if the future owners ever use it for a commercial use, then this variance would become void. Our goal was to, you know, keep businesses coming on our main streets, not have new homes built. But we also did not want to hurt our citizens that have.
I understand that we had homes on there that if the home was sold as a home, it could stay as a home.
Yeah, but we didn't know about the insurance and the mortgage companies not wanting to finance them for this same reason. And the dance are here. They are the current owners of the home. Uh, if you have any questions for them or their real estate agent is also with them.
So you're trying to do is make it work. The God forbid this ever happened for the house. The new owner had an issue and something became so damaged that they could rebuild the home the way it was, how it works it.
Correct. And I mean, you know, the property company will not loan money on that property with this variance unless I find somebody, well, we already have a contract on the house booked. They can't get the money with this variant. Now, if it was selling to a commercial, it'd be no problem, but this is selling it as a residential.
Right. Now, if the next owner would just pretend that he comes in and he buys your other lot south of you and puts in his business, we'll call it, then that's not really your issue anymore.
That's not an insurance issue. What starts selling, he can do whatever he wants to with it. I don't care. I do want my money.
The variance is simply going to allow the new homeowner to present it to the insurance and the mortgage company so he can get the loan on the home so it will be insurable as a residence to be rebuilt as a residence if it is.
It's a nice.
Well, it was built somewhere between thirty-nine and forty. So it's been here a long time.
That was before the zoning, so yeah, about forty years.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions about? There's no questions about Ford, we'll call Chin.
Mr. G, uh, Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Gandhi.
He's clearly, but yes.
Yes.
I'm already there. Thank you. Ladies.
Resolution was approved. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one one. For the second quarter, if you have any reporting.
Motion was made by Gandhi, second by Mr. Bernard, Mr. Kennedy.
All right, so this was first attempt at the DFA report. Uh, the only thing that I lack now to, in order to submit it to the state would be to translate our account numbers into their account numbers and submit the bar report. So I do have the rest of this week to do that pending approval by all of you for this report. So it should look pretty similar to what you've seen before. Uh, just made a little bit of formatting changes and some things for ease of compilation of this report. Uh, but as you'll see, I, I took the cash balances from column one straight off of the budget balances that were reported to um, the DFA previously when the budget was approved. Uh, the first column is the revenue column. Those balances came from our budget versus actual reports that are included in your packet here. Uh, same with expenses. And then just a simple calculation there determining what the balances are. The three columns added together and subtracting the expenses out. So what we have here is in, in each one of these columns that I have a negative number, I have to make a budget adjustment to not be reporting these, these negative budget numbers so that I can balance at the bottom. That investment column is just kind of like an FYI column and it's showing where we've got some money set aside for certain projects. So I did just leave that one alone. I didn't make any kind of changes to that investment column. And then the cash balance at the end is again, just a formula column that's showing that we just moved money in and out of this general operating fund to cover these adjustments, the budget adjustments that we made. And so I will be getting with the DFA to make sure that this is satisfactory to them and done, you know, in the format that they want to see. And then, like I said, I'll convert these numbers over into their account numbers and submit the bar this following week.
Any questions about? One thing I'd like to mention about Ms. Kennedy, a big house. Little under stress of this report. Probably every day. So we got to get this report done Friday in this month and she's only been here thirty days, less than thirty days. And I just, I just want to point out that she's grasped and everything to my satisfaction, I guarantee you, Ford, most likely appreciate as well that I really appreciate you working on this and getting some taxables. Appreciate you working with the Ford Commission. I know some have reached out to you already and, um, I know this is just something that needs to take care of. This is one of the items that we need to before the thirty-first of this month or one out today.
Okay.
Once again, I appreciate it.
And before we settle into a, a more regular monthly financial report, we did want to get this, this quarterly report out of the way. Um, and so, you know, going forward, it might be a little bit hard to understand. It was probably pretty technical, but um, that's kind of the go forward plan here to make it a little bit more understandable.
Any questions? I have a few questions about some of the. Thank you. First note, Berlin, please, roll caution.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Okay.
Mr. Gandhi.
Yeah.
Yes. Presidencies, pass. I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one two, approval of second quarter budget.
Motion was made by Gandhi, second by Mr. Bernard, Mr. Kennedy.
Um, I understand that this is kind of a process that goes along with the DFA that we, you know, will always kind of make a live budget adjustment. Hopefully we can use these adjustments that we've made over these quarters when we're actually doing our budget for this, this following year um, to try to, try to hit the target a little bit better and so we won't have to make such large adjustments each time. Um, I think it's going to be real, real important. And that's going to be something that myself and the new city manager is going to have to really focus on um, in the summer months to try to get a lot better handle on the budget and um, try to avoid some of these, some of these large adjustments.
And I'd like to point out all of my things on this budget adjustment. I think with the, with a very conservative budget that we did do for this fiscal year, I believe we're going to have a lot of adjustments between now and the end of the year. And that's because, you know, we've had some bust water logic, we've had some unexpected stuff come up and we did budget tight. So it's, I believe it's expected. Like I mentioned to Mrs. Kennedy, we did a very, very conservative budget. So we're going to end up having to add here and there just to compensate for some of the over spending, but it's not intentional. It's just that we budgeted tight and there's some unexpected sees that did, did arise and we need to, to make them adjustments.
Well, and I would like to point out too, that not all the adjustments, um, you know, are, are a negative adjustment. Some of the adjustments were adjusted up for income, unexpected income in certain accounts. And so there is consideration there. You know, when it comes out in the end though, and I think the thing that the state of New Mexico is looking at is after all the adjustments are made, are we still at a positive balance? And that's what this chart is showing us at the time.
Is there any questions for Mrs. Kennedy?
The capital projects, seven million four hundred thousand. Can you be able to link me all this? I mean, as far as one capital projects we've spent money on. Please.
Yes, we can. Um, and that'll kind of go back to the question that came up earlier with the, the eight hundred thousand for the Main Street project that was found. Um, it was just split into two different accounts. There's a water account and a sewer account. So it's, it's been a little bit more challenging in order to just find a specific number when there's math involved. But yeah, I think, I can see what that breakdown is. And, um, you know, again, that'll go back to the question about that. Uh, we do have this, uh, there's a number here for the COVID and it's just sitting there at the moment. But, you know, obviously we're going to utilize that money, but we'll have to decide what we can, what we're allowed to utilize it for and then where it's best served. So, so there, there is a lot of big, big numbers on this, uh, on this chart that we have to decide where it's going, where it's already determined to go and then where we can still move it, so.
Do you have any further questions?
No, I just think that I have a question.
There's no further discussion, we'll call Chin.
Mr. Gandhi.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Leo.
Yes. President passes, do we have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero thirteen, approval of city manager contract.
Motion was made by Mr. Bernard, second by. So I'll probably this one. Dr. Martinez, uh, who applied for the city manager position was approved by the board. Contract that he presented to us was pretty much mimic our contract. There's some changes that I'll let Attorney Patrick Mann go over here just a minute. Uh, on the salary portion, I put it out there because I mean that that has to be, that is not in stone. It's subject to what we choose, but it pretty much mimic what he was requesting and what our contract has in it. There's some, there's a few ground spots that we can clean up, but. Patrick, can you elaborate on that, on the defense side of it, sir?
Uh, certainly, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, just reading through the contract, I think overall it's, it's a form that's acceptable for the city. Um, there are a number of issues that we can easily clean up that talk about a, you know, a one hundred and eighty day notice. Um, and then right next to the one hundred and eighty day in perens, it's got the number nine zero. Um, I think the salary is showing a hundred and thirty or one thirty-five and then there's one thirty in perens. And so there's a number of those that exist. It just takes a matter of going through, cleaning that up. One of the issues that the mayor asked me about was some indemnification language. And so I took a look at the indemnification language, I, I believe was proposed by our applicant. Um, I think that language is okay. Um, what I'm going to do is add some additional language um, that does not obligate the city to indemnify our city manager if, um, he gets sued or is brought into a lawsuit um, and, and his actions are either negligent, um, like a misfeasance, malfeasance or intentional acts. And so normally where you see an indemnification is if somebody came in and they were going to undertake certain work on your property, um, that work might be dangerous or have a high likelihood of getting somebody sued and you want to protect yourself as far as the property owner or another individual involved. And so certainly as a city manager, um, anything that someone does not like about the city, um, he is going to have a, a target on his back like the city of Lovington. And in the past, we have provided, um, that city manager with counsel, um, free of charge. And so I anticipate we would not do anything different here. Um, that indemnification language is just a little bit more detailed, but in the unlikely event that it's something that the city manager would do that would be negligence on his part or a misfeasance, malfeasance or an intentional act on his part, um, I don't think the city would be obligated to indemnify him for that particular activity. And so that's the only thing I would change other than some typographical issues. But I, I'd be happy to stand for questions.
Do you want me to ask you David? Yes, I wrote you to that gentleman. You know, before we put it out there once, by a housing, yes, someone brought up at all or?
Uh, we, moving expense, that was the only thing, moving expense was moving expense. And us as a board can determine the amount to assist him move to Lovington. Uh, he has, like I say, his wife and his sixteen year old son plan to live here in Lovington and his son to go to school here within, in a school district. I don't know what the cost of moving would it be, but he wants to rent a home here in Lovington. Only other thing is that I know that, that we did a little research and the closest thing we came because he was looking for a three bedroom, we found a four bedroom, it was twenty-five hundred dollars. So that was kind of pretty steep and that was kind of worrying to me because the cost of renting a home here is pretty, pretty steep.
Right. I was just wondering, this is just my opinion, twenty thousand dollar housing and house purchase instead of, instead of the full price of the contract. That way there, he'd have twenty thousand dollars, put their home. He'd be putting down roofs basically to the community instead of just renting. I don't know if that's something to think about in that.
But then I think, looking from a management standpoint, if I was coming into the city of Lovington and, and I was a natural employee and could be fired any day or because I'm at will and only have nine days severance package and if I was to purchase a home with a mortgage and only had, uh, on top of that, if we, on that, on this contract right here says that if we terminate his contract, we're only obligated to pay him nine days worth of his, his salary and, and for the next three months. And that's, that's what he would be looking at.
And I understand that's what he's looking at, but I'm looking at what the city is looking at because we're hiring him, giving him a job.
Yeah.
And we're also offering him twenty thousand dollars to set up and purchase a house to put down roofs there to be a part of our community and stay in our community. I understand.
Yes.
Both sides.
Yes.
But that's just what I'm putting out there. That's something else to be entertained, Sarah, thought about.
Mayor, do I, did I say something? I actually. My name is Pam Willis. I have allegiance property management. And I actually met with the Martinez's on Sunday and showed them a house that I do have for rent um, at two thousand a month and they're very interested in it. And I've already spoken with the owners and they'll work with them so they can get down there and settle.
Thank you. Uh, they were here this previous Saturday looking for pleasant states, which I did, I did mention to you, Jim. They weren't here down. Mr. Kim.
Processing. I'll be kind of a little dirty.
I, and only other, other, what commissioner? Well, it stated my, my proposal was one twenty-five with one. His salary with Luna County, the state of Mexico, one twenty-five a year. And I was looking at one twenty-five with a five thousand dollar moving expense. That would be, but the one twenty-five would apply for the two, two years. He'd get one twenty-five this year, one twenty-five next year. But this year he'd get additional buy for movement and that would make his one thirty. That's what I was going to propose as well as one of the items I would put on the table for this evening as well. But like I said, what I put on the, on this contract, it was one thirty. That's because that's what he, uh, was requesting. And all the other requests that he made went through, uh, And all the other requests that he made went through Attorney McMahon and pretty much mimed what our contract, our current contract is with additional changes that McMahon recommended.
Does he agree with that guy? Is that high?
Another thing we can propose is one twenty-five without raises the next year. Well, James was making one.
I know what James was making. We won't go without that room. So, yeah, I'm not, I wasn't really happy about that. Definitely neither. But you know, I did, there's some research and different things like that. Doesn't mean it's a most people about, or most city managers about this side are about one oh five. I go one ten, somewhere in that range, you know. Maybe after a year we discuss whatever, but you know. Yeah. I'm, I'm struggling with that.
Because we're in a strong population, twenty-six thousand, place to size.
Yeah, the county's a little bit bigger, so there's a bigger organization with a little more like me to it, you know, copper tiles, you know, different cities about our size. Look up on the internet, they're mostly, mostly public records. You're looking about one oh five, somewhere in that range. So for say population size. So you know, that's, that's a guy that's got about a few years of experience under as well, different things like that. So that's kind of what I was looking at.
Yeah, I just, the, the thing that what the community, yes, it's our size. Another thing that I can give into consideration is the cost of living here is just outrageous. Compared with the tiles, you know, you get a, outside a cheap home, but it costs more. Costs of living, oh, there's a lot cheaper than oil.
I realize that.
And that's why I know she had mentioned it was a two thousand dollar a month, just, just for a home here that he was looking for. And most likely for tiles, I don't know what the cost would be there versus here, but I will here within our community is very high, very high to rent. I think some of, some of our staff would contest to it that they do pay, pay higher rent here and they, it is tough. I wanted to come over here and have some sort of financials. Just want to have something where you can be worth, worth him coming here. We went through eleven candidates, eleven candidates we paid him. And I just worried that if we go back to the drawing board, I mean, I could present to him what, what you guys recommend this evening, what the board commissioner recommends, and he doesn't take it, we have to go back to, to the eleven candidates again, pick another one.
For that, Ross?
You're saying miracle. Or diamond.
And I think, I think that's where we come back to the point of, of the ninety day. You know, he's, he's, he's in that Will employee, and if he's not producing in six months, you can pretty much see if he's not going to go in the direction this board. Like we said, the positive direction we, we have laid out and, and we just have to pay it out ninety days, but I just want to just try to get an opportunity for him to do this for him. I just know that we need a lot. It's not, the city's not, it's okay financially. It's just the, like Ms. Kennedy pointed out, Steve wants all the, the, the issues of getting the budget, doing good accounting practices in order, getting staff in order, waste water, water. We have some issues out there that, that, that need to be addressed as well. It's not, it's not, he's not walking into a, a city that, that everything's, even though we're doing our own finances, still have a lot of people. He's going to be held with a higher standard. And there's a lot of training involved, a lot of training. We're all brand new. And so the, I want to also mention that every director in our, other than the fire chief, everyone's new. And if we're going to guide him, guide him right, start it off right, I think it's this opportunity to do. Not want to go cheap and then end up not wanting what we would want. But like I said, I know that Steve, I agree, I agree with Steve because that's, we just started paying our city manager about a year and a half that salary.
Yeah.
But I want to also mention that I did put it here, emailed it, that Public Works Director, and I did mention that to Doctor Martinez. It's just a position that was made by the previous administration. And that's a ninety thousand plus benefit savings to the city. Also, Parks and Rec Director, his, his pay was about fifty-five thousand with with benefits as well. So that's about a hundred and, close to a hundred and, probably more than a hundred fifty thousand cost savings to the city. I did mention to him how that was consolidated with the road department and how Public Works would not have a publicist director. I thought that was too, we were too fat in the management team. We needed to trim that. That was just a recommendation from me and I did share that with the board as well. So I, I know we have the cost savings of about a hundred fifty thousand. Just all, all the management decisions.
Well, you know, we definitely do need a city manager.
I disagree.
Need a city manager, no.
I get, I get it. I just said I'm not happy about it. I didn't say it wouldn't go that way. I just said I'm not happy about it.
Because you know, if you get the wrong people out there making the wrong decisions, it's going to go backwards. I get it, the right person in there to make, I'm just trying to. No, no. The bread and butter, I'm good, I'm good with it. Six months is probably about, yeah. I understand. You good?
We recommend one twenty-five with five thousand. Moving expense, and it'd be one twenty-five this year and one twenty-five next year, put five thousand moving.
You must. So you're saying there's two years of moving expense?
No, no, just one. For this year, he's five thousand, but his salary would be one twenty-five for the two, two years. You know, each annual year, one twenty-five. Five thousand would be moving expense for him currently.
Well, I guess that, just throw it out there, we're set. I just pass.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner? Yeah, I, I've heard, I think, three, maybe four different scenarios on that salary. And so I'm not saying to wrap up discussion at all, certainly. We should take all the time you need. I just want to make absolutely clear before you vote that e- each, you know, Commissioner understands what we're voting on as far as that salary because that's going to be my job then to put that into that contract. And so just want to make sure we're absolutely one hundred percent clear on that.
Thank you.
So you stay with the buck thirty? What's your expense, what's your moving expense in? Or is it just one thirty? If you're one thirty, roll with it. Make it simple.
No.
Store there. But yeah, no, I, I mean. That's, what is the, if I was to draw it at one thirty, you figure out how to get here? What do you ask for? He didn't ask for moving expenses or anything like that, did he?
No, it's part of something that you could add. Part of any, any contract that someone moves in.
He's fine with that. You guys are fine with that?
So the proposal would be to pay Doctor Martinez, the new city manager, salary of one thirty annually for the next two years. That is part of this contract, pretty, pretty much the discussion on that. Patrick, change the literature to reflect what he wants to add on the defensive portion of this for his legal team.
So Bernard's going to have to repeat all that stuff for me?
No, it's pretty much it's, because it's one, so I think it's there other than the changes.
Corrections?
Corrections. Well, I think you could say that with corrections of, with, with recommendation of, of our city attorney figure and grant is made in addition to the contract in the salary set.
So we'll be done with that. Like to make that recommendation that City Attorney Back to Plan made on one thirty, a proposal as to Doctor Martinez. That we should forward on.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
Second.
Proposal was made by Commissioner Bernard, going the one thirty annual salary plus the recommendations of City Attorney in regards to his contract. Seconded by Commissioner Volk. Roll the motion.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Danny?
The Frau? Yes.
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Senator Mayor, motion, resolution twenty twenty-one dash one eleven, approval to advertise ordinance revision at campus businesses, license mending for reserve section dash sixteen dot zero four zero.
So, was made by, by Andy, Laura?
Mayor, Commissioners. First, the section five sixteen oh four oh, it's actually just section five point four oh. I don't know why sixteen's in this, on the agenda part of it. But on the action, it's just section five point four zero, that reserve section, just so that you know. That, that will need to be corrected if this is approved. Okay, so I went through, I spoke to each and every one of you and kind of made it a little bit. What I did is I took out this section of the compliance with the chapter inventory, the cannabis business license fee, the licensing requirement, and then I did add the personal cultivation and production. I did add that. So basically I tried to make it a little bit more simple. It seemed like it was too complex. And then I adopted basically the Cannabis Act is what was adopted in the beginning. I kind of changed that to where we adopted that. And then it goes into zoning permitting that's required in that section. They grow a little towards putting what they need to bring to the permitting department in order to get a permit. This is all being proactive instead of reactive. When these businesses come into town and you're getting a business license, then they, you need to see what zone they go in. You need to make sure that they have all the permits in place and everything is done correctly. That's the whole reason for the permitting, the zoning permitting process because Crystal will check on the zoning, I'll check on the code enforcement side, and then the fire marshal signs off on his side. We do that with all businesses anyways. We've already put that into place over the last couple of years. On the personal use, that was added in. There was a concern about the, the, seeing it from the public right away. So that section was put in so that for personal use, it must not be visible from the public right away. That was a concern that was had. This is also, that was pulled out of Elephant View, Elephant View, I put that also into theirs in this section of it. And that was a concern of some of the. On the enforcement side, I will be underneath code enforcement, police enforcement, and the fire marshal enforcement, depending on what type of issues there are. We're hoping there's not any issues because we're hoping through the permitting process with the fire marshal, myself, and zoning, that we've already gone through all the issues that can happen, that we've already done all the checks and balances so that everything runs smoothly. Do you have any questions?
I think, Attorney McMahon, did you have any want to add anything on this resolution, sir?
Well, I, I think my position is not unchanged from the last that we spoke. I, I had recommended that each one of you read the state law on cannabis. And one of the things I want to caution you about is by enacting this ordinance, are, are we going to have the personnel to enforce it? So it sounds good, it looks good, but do we have the people that are going to be able to enforce this? And so if we pass it, we need to set aside some resources and some warm bodies to make sure that we actually do something with this as opposed to just have it on our books. And so I think this version that we're looking at tonight is a much better version than the last one. But, but my overall position is the same.
Appreciate it. And I want to also point out that that was one of those testing items that we've been discussing this evening, but we tabled it to our next one. We had some further, further research that needs to be done, but that in regards to code enforcement, just reassessing how we conduct operations with our code enforcement. So that, that will be addressed on our next one.
I have a few questions.
Yes.
Lower in here, do I see as far as zones? I was wondering if we'd be able to specify what zones we're going to be having to send, or they're going to be, so that there's no misunderstanding. Now we're down the road as far as our zones allowed.
Sure. So if it's a commercial business, it will have to be in commercial zone. So right now currently we have like microbrewing businesses that are going into our commercials and they're going into Zoney. With Zoney, you also have to have the gross receipt tax. So we spoke to the businesses that are going in to assure that the city is going to be able to get the GRT taxes on that. So no different, any business license, anybody who applies for a business license, whenever our registration, and when they come in, we will look at the different zones. What is, are they trying to do a home business? Are they trying to do retail business? What are they trying to do? Which zone isn't allowed in? Is it manufacturing? What type of materials are in manufacturing? If you look at your zoning ordinance, it states what the prohibited uses are. So whenever we go through and we do a thorough investigation with these companies on the chemicals they're using, how much product's going to be in? Which zone does it actually categorize that it can be put in? And also what would the state allow? The state has very good and very strict guidelines on which they're going to be able to open these businesses. And it, it's going to be a double compliance on making sure they get their state and get their licensing for the state as well as does it fit into the zone that they're asking for it to be in.
I understand Laura, is there any way of incorporating the zones?
Sure, like adding into the zones? Yes, you could add it. What type of, yes, you could go in and change your zoning. That's cost. Going to talk about.
I'm not saying about changing zoning or anything. I'm just having about having zones in here so we know.
Oh, add it to the ordinance?
Yes.
Well, we already have the zoning ordinance is in effect, so we'd just be duplicating an ordinance.
You would just be putting it in here.
So he's saying that it's only allowed in zone, so this type of business would only be allowed in zone C or zone A. That's what he's asking.
Right.
You're wanting it more detailed into, we're going to allow this, this is what's allowed in A and this is what is allowed in B, this is what's allowed in C.
I'm going to ask you anything. I just want to, you know, to have it entered. There's no misunderstanding in the future.
Are you talking like the two hundred plants? You can have that in a zone A, which is residential. You know, if you have more than two hundred plants and you end up in a commercial, because that's considered a commercial business.
Yes, sir. Yes. There's, there's a place of no misunderstanding. And also I wanted to ask, is there any way to limit retail density? As far as how many are we going to have per city block? Are we going to have one? Are we going to have two?
You can look at that, we could look at that and put that into the zoning part of it. That's going to be a land use. That would have to then licensing part, and you're going to have to actually have the land that's going to be used. And on some of them, they do have where you can't really limit, and what I've looked at other cities and what they're doing is where you can't really limit how many are in, that you can say there are so many in this density of. Some other people are looking into that. I did talk to Albuquerque, actually called Albuquerque because they're kind of leading their bigger city, but they're usually the leading front in on a lot of this stuff. And they've actually chose to sit back right now and working on still what they want to put in and how it's going to be done. Currently what they're doing is they're just, they're going with what their codes already exist and how, kind of like exist and how, kind of like what I'm suggesting to do, and then put it into what that zone use is, that's how Albuquerque is actually.
And I've read that you can limit zone density one hundred percent.
That's what I did read, yes.
I've read that, and I can give you the information if you need it. I wanted to put that up to you Commissioners, to see that's something to talk about, that's something we want to do.
But that's.
And have a thought on Main Street. And that's, that's, that's a discussion.
That's.
I was just looking at filling in all the empty.
So what, that would go into the zoning ordinance? Is that correct? Put that in the zoning ordinance? The density part of it.
Yeah, density is one of the things that the City of Lovington could look at as far as this particular ordinance. One of the things that I would caution you about is what's the reason for limiting density of these types of businesses? And do we limit other types of businesses, the density of other types of businesses? So the last thing we want to do is to treat these types of businesses different than all the others that we have. And so I don't want to set us up for, um, a lawsuit by these individuals saying that, you know, we're being treated different, you don't regulate the density of, um, commercial, uh, ventures that sell tobacco, or alcohol, or lottery tickets, or whatever else might be on your list. And so we can do that, we just need to be very careful that we're not doing it just for, um, a cannabis business and not taking the same things into consideration for another business that may sell something like alcohol, tobacco, or lottery tickets.
Thank you, Patrick, I, I understand that, that's, so it's just something I wanted to put out there, if you feel that flow rate or roll is good, I don't know, it's, uh.
No, I think that's only horrible, but, you know, I mean, don't be a bad business plant altogether, I wouldn't think that that would happen, but, you know.
Right.
I have to run across the Colorado state line there, and, yeah, they're door to door nearly, so I, I do under, I never thought of the density part of it.
That's just something that I wanted to discuss and put up to you guys, and I have no qualms about having cannabis reps whatsoever, I want that to be known, I just want to talk about it before we do it, that's all.
No, not a thing. Now, I, I, I know like a few issues have arrived this evening, and most likely it'd be advisable to table this once again, to get Commissioner Volk's issues addressed, I'd like to see.
Sounds like a good move.
Governor May, vote.
How long do we want to table this?
Just to, I mean, I guess that'd be adequate time to do the research on it.
On if we can add the zoning into the part of it.
Commissioner Volk had stated to, to, to break it down in the zones on, on what, so, so if an individual's coming to town, wanting to put a business, he'll know what, what he can and can't do in our zone, because we already have, city already has a current zone, uh, that's per ordinance.
Correct, so I need to guess on, on what type of, so I need to go through and do the research on what type of businesses there are, and then what zones they qualify for.
Yes, yes.
That's what you're asking.
And then define that more in the ordinance, that way someone can just pick it easy, say, like, on a commercial area, this is what I can do on a commercial versus on what I can do in a residential, I like that.
Okay, and then we're going to do this special for this, but not the other, so like even your alcohol ordinance, it doesn't give you which zones you can do that in, it doesn't say, like, when you go through your business licensing, you have your surfaces, you have your alcohol, you have your, uh, the garage sales actually in there, but, uh, junk dealers, there's several, there's a whole list in there, there's probably about six or seven, and all of those, none of them specify what zone they can be done in, but you're wanting it to be done in this one, is that going to be a problem, Patrick?
No.
The issue comes is the state can allow you to grow in a residential area, so you already have an issue that the state's just said your zoning's, no, avoid. So, because two hundred plants in a residential area, mine is considered full blown commercial product, so, yeah, you, you got some issues here. So that's, that's what I'm reading.
I, I think we could look at other, other issues, um, that we have on the books, like nuisance, you know, odors and traffic, those kinds of things that could be helpful for us. The, the one thing I want to be careful about, and I can sit down with Laura and go through this, or the other thing I want to be careful about is that we're not, um, restating something on zoning that is not absolutely the same as, as where we have it laid out in, in the first part of it. It may be helpful for those cannabis businesses, um, I think it's incumbent upon themselves to look at it, but because perhaps of the unique situation where you could have those two hundred plants in a residential area, um, that, that we need to come back and, and take a look at that, and, and we can change our zoning, um, one of the things that we need to keep in mind is it's time consuming and very, very expensive, um, but those are the things that we can look at, and so, once we get, um, some direction from the city commission, um, then Laura and I can sit down and look at some of these issues and try to, um, get a version of the ordinance back to you that addresses those without causing additional problems.
Thank you, thank you, Big Man.
Sure.
Want to amend your motion?
Yes, I'd like to amend my motion to resolution twenty twenty-one dash one eleven. And I'm going to, uh, table it to the next city commission meeting, which is.
We're in fourteen.
Fourteen.
You said, you said. Oh, second, sorry. Proposal was made to table resolution twenty twenty-one, that's one on one by Commissioner Volk, second by Commissioner Danny. Shannon, roll.
Commissioner Volk?
Yes.
Commissioner Danny?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Meo?
Yes. Do I have a motion?
The big emotion approval ordinance five eight nine, approving magistrate court restructuring.
Second. Proposal was made by Commissioner Volk, second by Commissioner Bernard. I'll take the lead on this real quick, the stuff that we've already approved and so forth, the restructure, uh, restructure, it's just, uh, what we, uh, instead of the cleaning, the cleaning, uh, said thirty-five thousand a year, and then they went down to fifteen thousand on the cleaning portion of that, it was about the changes that were made on the, on the approval of the master court restructuring, but we did approve on our last, uh, quote, probably about a little over a month ago, a month ago, and now we've just come back and filed approval on the master court restructuring. Like I said, once again, that the, the, the master court is paid for by the bond, uh, we never see the money, it's pretty much, uh, state pays the lease, the lease goes directly to the bond, and the city, that's, you know, the city does approve, uh, uh, of everything that goes through, through our, our treasury, but we never issue out checks and statements through the, through the state, you know, money goes directly to the bond.
If I may, um, Stifle Finance has like these interest rates and final terms, and they were sent to the New Mexico Finance Authority last week, and I believe, um, Brad Ains called Tawny right before the meeting.
Yes.
And gave her some information.
Yeah, I think I'm sorry.
Okay, so, yeah, just some high, high points, um, Brad got this just minutes before, uh, he called me, which was just minutes before the meeting, um, so he's just outlining and, and kind of reentering some of this, and I've been in contact with him to kind of get up to speed with all of these, but, um, so he was saying that the AOC bond security lease revenues, um, when we're doing the actual construction, we are not paying any of the shortages, um, that there's actually a guaranteed max price for the contract, so any monies, um, that are approved are covered by this financing, so they would have to actually eat any of those shortages per the contract. Uh, March eleventh is the closing date, and at that point, we can pay invoices, so I have actually been in contact and, uh, with some of the engineers that have been asking for payments, the architects that are asking for a payment, uh, but they will have to wait till March eleventh, because there is a, um, means by which we could reimburse ourselves, but we don't want to have to do that. So that bond security is going to be a three percent interest rate, um, as the mayor was stating, the AOC actually pays the debt, uh, there is also a repair, replacement, maintenance reserve in there built in, and it's at thirty thousand a year. So that's the information that Brian had given me, uh, per this contract, I got, it's an eleven-page contract, and he barely had time to review it, uh, before this meeting, so.
And a lot of this has to do, because a lot of, everybody's still working from home, it's kind of a little frustrating. And it's thrown at, thrown at us pretty, pretty quickly, like, we'll put it on, on the agenda and get it approved, because every time you get it approved, get the funding approved, move oral and project, which, I know you see this come across, uh, the agenda more and more, it's always at the last minute, but it's not stat, it sits, uh, the bond company in as well as the AOC with the state of Mexico, they're the ones, but, like I said, they're the ones handling the funding on it, doesn't come to the city, doesn't come out of the general, not enough that the lease pays for the, for the bond.
So you said the interest rate actually went down?
Yes.
So we're seeing like eleven percent?
I believe it's got a before and after on one of these that they sent to me.
And as far as this with the restructuring, uh, is this affecting our buying rate whatsoever?
No, it was just, uh, they had proposed something, uh, we came back, but the bond company came, but with a different proposal, and it was costing, it's just saying, so it was beneficial for us, for, for this, uh, restructure.
Okay. That is, that's what I'm seeing there.
Yeah, it's because, um, like she said, we really got back to the changes, so we will need probably to put a motion in to, uh, reflect the three percent on the ordinance, that way I can go and print it off, we can have that signed before, it's because we received this, this ordinance by the bond council, like thirty minutes before, Brad called thirty minutes before, so that's why there's conflicting interest rates, so I know that needs to be changed, what, what, what was the other, the interest rate, and what were the other changes? Um, the closing date was that. But I think, well, and possibly that, I don't know if that prepared maintenance.
No, that was.
It was just the, um, bond council who made the ordinance, had a, from, from, you bet twelve percent or eight percent.
No further discussion, roll call, Shannon.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Volk?
Yes.
Commissioner Danny?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution passed, do I have, do I have a motion?
Senator Mayor, let's make a motion for approval of ordinance five ninety, approving gross receipts tax refunding.
Proposal was made by, we had it second by Commissioner Volk.
This one was good, um, Brad was able to get the change, or the bond council was able to get the changes in, and everything should be as reflected as the resolution that we passed. But it, like I said, uh, this one's been sent to, in, at they as well, and the interest rates are locked in and everything's good. And that rate is one point zero nine, uh, saving estimated approximately seventy-five thousand over the next five years. Uh, this will pay off the old bond from Whitley County State Bank, the lawyers are beginning, will be providing a payoff notice to them in the next week, and same closing date, March eleventh.
Charity for discussion. No further discussion, roll call, Shannon.
Commissioner Volk?
Yes.
Commissioner Danny?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes. Yes. Ordinance passed. Do I have a motion?
Senator Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for financial report.
Proposal was made by Commissioner Danny, second by Commissioner Volk, President Keaton.
Okay, so the financial report, um, reflects the same that you had been used to seeing just with the vendor publication report, and then a detailed, uh, Visa report, and so I'll, uh, try to answer any questions. The only thing, I did get with the ladies earlier, um, the only thing that they thought might stand out a little bit here was this Pro, I'll have to find it, um, it's like Pro Toys something for thirty-six thousand?
How about that James Cook, Hobson for thirty-nine?
Um. Oh, Pro Quality. I don't know what that Hobson one is, um, I just asked them which one they thought y'all might not recognize. I can probably. I'm still trying to find it. Pro Quality Construction. For twenty-six thousand for James Cook, it was, um, street department, dry pit pump, suction elbow flames, miscellaneous parts for, uh, for, for the water department, sorry, that was for the water.
Oh, okay. Obviously, some of the, these usually have been, they're like, when I also, there's, they are, there's, and he's planted three things out there, and they're, they're, they're still with it.
Pro Quality Construction at thirty-six.
Yeah, and that one's the doors for the senior center, um, but it will be reimbursed, yes, so we did have to pay that upfront, and it's going to come back to us.
We got a drink, and it's just, so it gives pay.
They need that condition of this, twenty-two thousand?
That probably will be wastewater for the, uh, some of the deals up north are going to have issues with it, so.
Commissioner Volk said it has been addressed, and you won't see that customer, like, it was addressed and now, yeah, and repair, yes, but it was two, two sections, one had to do with the wastewater facility shutting down for five hours, and we had twelve trucks out there, and then the, the live station, well, two live stations, he's been having to vacuum and wait on parts, one and, oh, wait parts name, come, parts turn in late.
So that's one thing, maybe?
Yes, you said, see that.
Hopefully not.
Couldn't see it for, couldn't see it for a while, yeah. That was how much they gave. Now, thank you, I believe, Danny's talking about three, two.
We did have a large, um, rate insurance payment too, and it's one of our, to the year that we have, this one was.
Was made twice a year, I don't know.
One's for liability insurance for. Yeah.
Is that on the vehicles?
This one was liability insurance for everything.
Yes.
And then the other one that we pay for is, uh, renewal part, oh, the bond renewal one, yeah, we pay one like in July, and then we pay one around this.
I'm sure.
They're, they're around that three hundred cost, it's one of the three hundred thousand.
No, Commissioner Volk, to answer your question too, I think that's something, uh, President Kennedy will outline, of course, as well, because I'd like for them to know when we get these high expenditures coming up like that, we got insurance premiums and bond premiums, and we'll kind of know what they're doing, I guess, as well as staff, he knows, and that'd be your, your, your team, is Kennedy, to let them know, hey, uh, watch your spending, we've got, you know, we got bonds, we've got, very, thank you. Yes, sir, yes, I think that's part of her, she will be ensuring that staff knows her, it's like the way we're budgeting for the year. But we've been covering our bonds, and everything's, everything's, everything sounds, or, I mean, it's, it's just good accounting practice while we're vacuuming, you know, and it's outlined how it's been. That's outlined, how it's been.
Bill Williams Tire Center. Units 41 and 43. Dars.
Jay Keaton's tired. We did, yes, sir.
Reason?
They were bare.
No, no, I get that part. I've seen your guts dropped. I just didn't know why we didn't use a little.
That is the, he shifts them to Lovington Tire. That's where the purchase point is, but they're actually installed at Lovington Tire. That's their supplier, so.
Okay, yeah.
Just a question. Yes, sir. Attorney, further questions about the board? There's no further questions about the board, roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Busher?
Yes.
Mr. Mio?
Yes. Counselor, financial reports approved. Do you have a final motion?
Do you make a motion for adjournment? Made by, Gandy seconded by Commissioner Bowles. Is there any further discussion?
No further discussion, roll call.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Busher?
Yes.
Mr. Mio?
Yeah.